I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June the 7th. Mr. Goodwin, will you call the roll?
All right. And Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt?
Here.
Mr. Harwell. Mr. Rispento?
Here.
Mr. Armstead?
Here.
Mr. Broadhead. Ms. Andress?
Here.
Mr. Cronteras. And Mr. Roberts. There's a quorum.
So we have a quorum, that's great. All right, so I'm going to have both the April 5th and May 3rd minutes in our packets. Just to ask if the commission members have had a chance to review. I'd like to apologize for those of you who were here before, apologies that we didn't have a quorum previously. I'm to blame too for that. Any comments or questions from anybody on the commission? Entertaining motion for approval of both sets of minutes as read.
Move to approve.
And we'll have a vote by acclamation, Mr. Goodman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. All right. Communications from the Chair and Vice Chair, Mr. Roberts apologizes for his absence tonight. It was scheduled, so we knew he would not be here. I can't say that I'm always that good about letting people know I'm going to not be here when I have a scheduled absence, so appreciate that, and I have none myself. And move on to old business. Carried over from May is a request to consider amending the city's zoning ordinance to include the sign and the fence ordinance. There's our fence ordinance changes. That's RZ 220501. This is a request. I'm sorry. I apologize. I went straight to the case number. So we're just on the erection, location, construction of exterior fences and walls, and this is a draft with edits from members of the Planning Commission to go back to the council for approval. And would ask if any of the members of the Planning Commission have comments or questions.
I just recommend that we send it back to the council.
As edited?
As edited, yes.
And that would be dated May the 3rd of 2022.
Second.
Mr. Goodman, do we need?
I'll call roll with that. All right, Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Rispento?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And Ms. Andress?
Yes.
All right, so that will go back to the council with a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission for their consideration. Now moving on to RZ 220501. For those who may not have been here before, what we do is invite the applicant to come up, state their name and address, present their case to the commission. We will then have a public hearing. Anybody who has questions or comments are welcome to come up, and from there we will close the public hearing and entertain questions or concerns from the commission, and then have a vote from there. This first case is purely a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the City Council for their approval. So if somebody here from Wilkerson Enterprises LLC, please come up, state your name again and your address, and sign in.
Ben Watson, Live Oak Engineering, 2509 Seventh Avenue South, Birmingham. I'm the engineer representing the property, and really, as y'all know, this property's on the corner of 18th and 27th. And really with the work being out done out there, and just in general the conformance of the property, everything around it's zoned C4A. We're asking for this to be rezoned C4A to match what is on the street, match the streetscape requirements that are going along very quickly, I might add, that the construction's going amazing fast and very good too, so they've done most of the work in front of the property already. So we're just looking to extend to that, and the work we do out there in the future will tie into the streetscape project, but the way it's affected the property, it really lends this property to be zoned C4A rather than just say 4. I'm really here to answer questions more so than to try to give you a spill.
Good. All right, thank you, Mr. Latson. Anybody from the public will open the public hearing? Anyone from the public who would like to come forward and ask any questions or pose any concerns? All right, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Latson, you can come on back up just in case any of the commission, sorry, I wasn't fast enough. Commission members have questions or concerns?
I did want to ask if you're able to share what's going into the location?
Yes. We're good.
Okay.
Little Professor has not yet signed the contract, but they are, it's there to be signed, so it is a local nine, high-traffic user that is local to the area, they're just moving down the street. I just, I can't speak until contracts are signed, I have to play engineer.
Thank you. Anybody else, questions or concerns? I'd just like to note for the public that we basically have traded half of the parking spaces that were the property specifically, property of parking spaces that are now forfeited by virtue of what's happening with the project, and so part of this is enabling the folks who occupy the space to be in compliance and conforming with their zoning, so. All right, any other questions or concerns from commission members? Entertaining motion for RZ 220501.
I'll move to approve a zoning change for case RZ 220501.
I'll second that.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Goodwin, will you call?
All right. Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Rispento?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Thank you, your case has been approved.
Thank you. And that's your recommendation to City Council?
Goes to City Council, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes, recommended to council, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I've got it right there on my piece of paper, say it the right way.
Sorry.
All right. Moving on to RS 220502. This is an application for resurvey approval, and see if the applicant is Ray Wiegand, or is there a representative? Please sign in and state your name and address for the...
Yep, my name is Brad Sink. I'm actually the owner of 110 and 116 East Edgewood Drive. Just quickly about our resurvey application. We are next-door neighbors to the deceased, Miss Mary Frances Farley, had the opportunity upon her passing last fall to purchase the next-door adjacent lots to our home. We're intending to extend our property line. We think that this is actually a pretty good scenario for us and our neighbors on the street. We're, we have two houses on these properties collectively today. We're intending that there will only be two houses on those three lots in the future. We are simply, you know, just asking to move over our property line a little bit through the resurvey and then subsequent sale in the future of the adjacent site. Take any questions if you guys have.
Okay. Mr. Sink, if you don't mind, just have us step aside, and we'll see if anybody from the public wants to speak. We'll open the public hearing, and I would ask if anybody wants to speak against this case, please come up first. If there's anybody who would like to speak against this case, please come up first. Seeing none, anybody who would like to speak in favor of the project, you're welcome to come up also. And we have several notes from residents, neighbors who have spoken in favor, all these letters are noted. So seeing nobody else from, no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing and ask for Mr. Sink to come back up for any commission members who have questions, concerns. I'd just like to point out too, these always seem to go really well when we have residents who are diligent and checking with neighbors for asking, you know, letting them know what they're doing. Sometimes it doesn't go as well, it seems. And it's just the communication, I know most of the time makes people feel better about the intended project. Anybody else?
I would only point out, as noted earlier, that the new lots do meet the NPD requirements. They ran that check, so they are meeting the average size of lots in the immediate contact area. I did want to ask, is it the, are there plans for new construction? Are you going to tear down one of the houses or not? Is that maybe premature?
Yeah, beyond the scope of, at least as far as I'm willing to comment on. We're more focused on the additional, you know, curb fee that we're going to get.
But just to let the commission know, it does meet the requirements for NPD.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. No further questions? Entertaining motion for RS 220502. Anybody?
Motion to approve, motion RS 220502.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Goodman, will you call the roll?
All right, okay. Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Rispento?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes. All right, your case has been approved. All right. Next is AD 220601. The name of the development is Homewood High School, and this is for the amendment to the final development plan to improve parking for the high school.
My name's Curtis Eatonman with LBYD Engineers, 880 Montclair Road, switch 600. We're here on behalf of the Board of Education requesting approval of the amended final development plan to add 49 parking spaces at the high school. Basically, this would be along the northern portion of the campus on property that is owned by Sanford University currently. The Board of Education and Sanford are working out a long-term lease agreement, basically, where the Board of Education will put in the infrastructure, build the parking spaces, and then obviously Sanford, it would revert back to Sanford at some point in the future should the use change at the school. Really, I'm here to answer any questions that might be had by y'all or by the public, so.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton.
Eatonman.
Eatonman, sorry. And so we will open the public hearing. If anybody from the public has any questions or comments, please come up. If you're in favor or against, please come onto the front. Seeing nobody move to the front, we'll close the public hearing and open questions from the Planning Commission for Mr. Eatonman.
I would just comment, pre-pandemic, like immediately, like February 2020, President Wyatt at the time was Counselor Wyatt, and I met with Dr. Maddox and Dr. Cleveland, and we were working on parking for the high school because of all the, you know, the amount of kids that were going to be coming through, and so it's great to see, because we had to set everything down, you know, in the pandemic, and then Dr. Cleveland retired, and so we just, everything stopped, and obviously the kids are still coming, so it's great to see that, that a solution, that you guys came up with something. This is different than what we had worked on, so this is a great option, so it's great to see.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I appreciate the not encroaching into the flood zone any from the current plan is great, as far as I'm concerned, I just wanted to mention that too, and diligence that you guys do in your work. Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I wanted to just inquire about the overhead utility modifications, what's involved in that?
Yes, sir. So this is under the large Alabama power transmission line easement. We have clearances, we've been in contact with the power company and the various communication providers that are on those poles. The, the power clearances are good, and we're working with a couple of the communications providers to basically raise their lines on the existing poles to make sure that we have the clearance between, minimal clearance from the surface to the, to the communications line. So fairly minimal in the grand scheme of things as far as modifications necessary.
Okay, and also you had these stormwater detention facility?
Yes, sir. We'll have underground stormwater detention because we're converting what is currently green space to parking, so we'll have stormwater detention that regulates pre and post runoff as well as handles our water quality necessary for the additional parking.
Okay, okay. Is that, where's, where's the water going once it's released?
Once it's released from this side, it basically goes to, directly to Shades Creek.
Shades, Shades Creek.
Or actually it overland flows into Shades Creek.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And those plans will be submitted for, for review by staff as a part of the building permit?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Nothing further. Entertaining a motion in favor of AD 220601 from the Planning Commission member.
I would, I would just ask quickly, I wanted to make sure Mr. Smith and Mr. Goodman, that your questions are answered as far as the engineering goes, and you're satisfied with what you've seen, and I mean, you don't have any concerns, any other further concerns?
No, so what Sherry and I were talking about is our, is our landscape ordinance, so sometimes the amended development plans and developed plans don't get reviewed against the, what did I just say? The landscape, the amended development plans don't get reviewed against the landscape ordinance, so there may be a requirement to add in a couple of landscape islands.
Okay, we have, we have a landscape architect onboard, and we can certainly work through that with, with staff, I guess.
Right, 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 but so that would change the amount of parking spaces that are included in the amended development plan? Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
But again, I'm not sure that the number, so your actual development plan...
It's 49, so if, but it's four area too, it's 15,000.
Right, so maybe what happens is we, we strike that last approximately 49 additional parking spaces, and we just leave additional 15,315 square feet of additional parking area.
That's acceptable.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does, yeah, it does, that way you can work with that.
That way we're not locked into the exact amount of parking spaces on the development plan?
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
It does. I'm, I'm looking for where specifically that I'm, what, the motion that needs to be made needs to conclude that we are proffering a change to remove the number of spaces and only specify this area.
Yeah, that's it.
So I need better glasses.
I know, I can't. I can't read that.
They'll look the smallest.
You shouldn't reduce it.
I see.
There's a requirement that there's a landscape island every 10 spaces.
Right, so that reduces the parking area.
So it doesn't increase your...
Right.
Okay, so, so what I'm, what I would like to entertain is a favorable motion to approve FD 220602 with the edit of the project narrative to include only the approximately 15,315 square feet area for additional parking.
I would make that motion. Do I need to say all that back to you?
I don't think so. I hope not.
I will. FD 220602 with the amendment?
It's 01.
Oh, sorry, 01, I'm sorry, I was looking, sorry, I was looking at the wrong thing. 01, thank you, 01.
I'm looking at the wrong page again.
With the change...
It's AD 220601.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was looking at the wrong, I don't know what I was thinking, I'm sorry. AD 220601, I'm sorry. With the change from 49 parking spaces to 15,300 square feet. Yeah. That's my motion.
Second.
All right. So the motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Goodwin?
Ms. Wilcutt, you second that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Rispento?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Andress?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Your case has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Eatonman. I'm so sorry, you guys, I had this open, and the other one was beneath it, and so I thought that was the first page on that one, again.
That's, I did the exact same thing, that's what I was doing.
I love case numbers. Okay, moving on to FD 220602. This is an application for development plan from Belmont Family Properties LLC. If there's anybody from the applicant who could come forward, I'm going to try to get your name right and your case number right.
Once again, Ben Watson, Live Oak Engineering, 2509 Seventh Avenue South, Birmingham. I'm representing Belmont Family's Properties, which is in this case Big One Motorsports, Oxmoor and 65. Their plan is to add 20-foot-wide bay to the front of this existing building, all 200 feet long, for 4,000 square feet of building space, which will allow them to completely redo the front and make it much more aesthetically pleasing, as we all know it's a, been there a while, let's put it that way, it's dated, how about, how about that word? And so what that would allow us to do, there's ample room today to allow us, and that's, the drive-off today in there is almost 50 feet wide, so we can absorb that parking area and push it forward and still give us adequate parking requirements. We cannot add any spaces, but we're not losing any spaces, so we're trying to just modify the plan, the master plan to allow for them to have more showroom space. This is not for trying to increase their customer base, this is, they have nice, pretty big toys, big toys take up space, they need more space. That is what we're trying to accomplish, and then this will also allow them to make the front of this much more appealing from the street, and also from their standpoint, it would be much more attractive to potential customers.
All right. Just thank you for your presentation. We're going to ask, we're going to open the public hearing, see if anybody from the public would like to speak in favor or against. Please come state your name and address and sign in for the record.
From the outset, I have no problems with Big One, I love the place, it's like a toy store. But that being said, from what I see on the zoning map, it is in the G U R D. Am I somehow incorrect on that?
No, you are correct.
You're correct.
It's in the district.
So, I mean, as far as I know, these are vehicle sales, so that would be a non-conforming use to the G U R D, unless there's an exception for Big One Motorsports. And that's really where, that's what I'm centering my question at, it's more of a question rather than an opposition. I mean, if it's, these are vehicle sales, I, no problem with them, they don't cause nobody no harm, okay? But if it's G U R D and vehicle sales are not allowed, then how are we adding to a
What I see on G U R D is, you have vehicle accessory sales. I guess I don't know what the prior conformity, non-conforming status was. I apologize. Can either Mr. Goodman or Kale speak to that?
You mean what it was zoned before it was on G U R D?
Yeah, was it?
I'm not sure what it was zoned before it was on G U R D.
And, and I would just point that, I mean, I think regardless of what it was before, you're adding to a non-conforming use. So to the extent that it was a non-conforming use at the time of G U R D, you're now adding an additional 4,000 square feet of non-conformity, which generally I thought was prohibited.
Thank you, Mr. Patel.
C1, C2.
Are they expanding the use of the building? Are they changing the use of the building?
The current use is for, you stated for, not for sales actually, but for, what your planned, your planned usage is not for sale.
Correct, our planned usage is to spread stuff out that's in there. Yes, it is.
Storage.
Storage, there's office spaces going to be in there, it's, um, we're moving the bathrooms around in.
And so it sounds like Mr. Patel's question is, are we able to allow a change to the current plot, the buildings that they have, their existing facilities, when they are non-conforming right now because they are vehicle sales?
Which they were before G U R D, I mean, that's the question is, did, were they grandfathered in? I wasn't on the council in G U R D's past, so, yeah, exactly, they grandfathered in.
So in G U R D, you can have vehicle accessory sales and services such as tire muffler, brake, transmission upholstery, expressible change. Right, with all the work inside if it, if the service space don't front a major arterial.
And from that same regard, the vehicle sales are all internal vehicle sales as well too, so there is no external, there's external storage, but that's until they can move it inside.
The use is not changing.
The use is not changing.
From what it is now.
Yeah. Permits used as in C1 and C2, but again, it doesn't delineate vehicle sales.
But I guess, I guess the big question is, is does the building actually even conform now?
Well, it doesn't, right? It doesn't conform now, the, the current usage is, is vehicle sales. So it's, it's non-conforming, but grandfathered from whatever the prior zoning was. And so Mr. Patel's point, I think still, is that you can't make changes on an exception, you have to become conforming when you make or approve changes, right? You can only be grandfathered in without making changes. Is that, is he correct?
Can it expand a non-conforming use, is what you're saying?
Right. So there's, there has not been a motion that's been made yet. The question I think would be, should we have, would you care to do, carry over your case for further?
I think that would be appropriate.
Research?
Because...
It's a very interesting point.
I, they probably, yes.
And I think we're going to need to research a little bit more.
I'd, I'd agree, there is some...
At the moment, I think we'd have a hard time approving.
Understand completely, and if we, we can work through whatever hurdles we need to work through to make that happen, because no, I understand exactly the predicament y'all are in now.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, so if you're, okay with this, we'll carry over your application for FD 220602 to our next meeting.
Which will be July 5th, if that's, unless, yeah.
Everybody's welcome to the Our Lady of Sorrows Fourth of July Festival, right?
Or, or less, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next case is RS 220603. This is Murray Hill Road, application for resurvey and approval. Our applicant is here. Could you please come forward and state your name and address and sign in for our records? Mr. Will, can you tell us about your... Mr. Will, can you tell us about your case?
Subdividing the 1784 Murray Hill Road into two lots. It's two-point, something acres now, and it'd be about two lots, an acre or something each.
Okay. Anything else you want to present? Well, if not, if you want to hang out for a minute, we'll open the public hearing. Open the public hearing, if anybody's here to speak for or against, please come to the front. Seeing no one move toward the front and we can't have questions from our online anymore, so we'll close the public hearing and Mr. Will will, please come on back and we'll entertain questions or comments, concerns from the Planning Commission members. I'd just point out again, Mr. Goodwin already noted in our work session that we do meet the average lot size concerns and conformity in order to split the lot. Yes. For NPD.
Yeah, it does meet NPD calculations to permit two lots, so it does meet those requirements.
Anybody? Mr. Will, do you currently reside?
Next door at 1784.
Okay.
Also at 1772. Own three houses, well, my daughter owns one now and own the other two.
I see. And did you have, do you have a plan for somebody who may build there or is it staying within your family? Just curious.
It's going to stay within the family right now, but I have had someone approach me since they put up the signs and I probably won't do anything with it, I'll probably let my kids build a house. I do have some plans of a large house to go there. Kind of like my house next door, if you've driven by.
Yep.
Cutting into the bank and putting a driveway down off Murray Hill and a driveway, off the gravel driveway that comes in now and then cutting 17, existing 1784, which I just probably will change, cutting it into Murray Hill at the property line is a circle down.
Was that 1796, that big construction they're doing right now, is that right, right behind you?
No, it's, 96 is the new house they just built, I believe.
Yeah, that's the one I'm asking, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's Dr. Gunnell's house. I believe that's correct, I'm not positive on the address.
I love that area, it's nice.
Best kept secret in Homewood.
It is, I know, not, not much longer.
They're building a nice house across the road from me. Of course, we've built a lot of nice houses up there.
Anything else, commission members?
Yep, I've moved to approve RS 220603.
I'll second that.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded.
Who's seconded?
Mr. Respinto?
Okay, all right. Ms. Wilcutt?
Yes.
Mr. Respinto?
Yes.
Mr. Armstead?
Yes.
Ms. Andres?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes. Your case has been approved?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so there's a potential for a July 5th meeting and there's no other business. Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn? I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.